Call the meeting for the Select Board to order for February 24th at 7:01. Chief Mantello, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need an approval for the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda for February 24th, 2025.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr., sorry, Mr. Chairman, the D&amp;H rail trail, that update's not going to be ready for tonight, so that can be scratched.
We'll just skip it. We've already approved the agenda. Approval of the minutes for February 10th?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from February 10th, 2025.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes for February 10th, any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mary Lee.
Page two, under Ethan Allen. M.L. Harris question cleaning up after horses, it should be a comma if they were going to be included, so it's just a comma. Then down where the first line is spouting seconded, it says, "M.L. Harris is concerned, not would be concerned." And on page three, review and discussion of ballot, the next to the last line, it says, "They are not unreasonable compared to those towns." I think you can take "compared to those towns" right out because you've already comparing it up above to other towns. Down the next one, the second line down, there was revenue line for this service, it should be "which" was not assigned, "which" should go in there. And down to the next line, there's a "which" that ought to be "and." And down at the bottom, where it says John Alexander, it says, "There is an envelope that needs to be sealed up and should see energy savings. What envelope would be sealed up to save on energy?"
It's talking about the insulation envelope of the building.
Okay. Sitting here wondering what kind of envelope are you in?
Mary Lee, that second, where'd you say there was another TSA contract, is that where you're saying the?
Third line down, the first word "which" should be crossed out and it should say "and."
Let's see, page four, I don't have anything. When we're talking about Mark Brown asked about police department personnel and burnout and if discussing, are you asking, were we discussing it that day, or I wasn't sure what they meant, so I just circled it? And then down at the bottom, under action items, it says, "All board members, to be sure, are informed, to be sure they are informed." And I guess that's all I have.
What do you got, Rob?
Page three on the recreation department update, first paragraph down at the bottom, J. Alexander briefly explained what casillas are willing to do for maintenance. I don't believe that we know what casillas is willing to do, I think was the discussion that we had.
That is correct.
We're still talking about what they are and what they aren't going to do. And then page four, purchase orders for approval, the first one for the dog kennels, I voted no on that one. So it was four to oh, not five to oh, or four to one.
Quickly, where's that, where is that, Rob?
Purchase orders for approval.
Okay, and which one?
The first. I still made a motion to approve purchase order.
Five, three, six, one, five?
Yeah.
Okay.
I voted no on that.
You voted no? Okay.
That's all I had.
Mark?
I'm good.
Rob?
I'm good.
Page four, just one thing, page four, the third paragraph of the manager's report, it says, "They have received $5,800 for water damage at the town office," that should be the public service building? Correct?
Correct.
That's all I have. No other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to approve the minutes for the informational town meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the informational town meeting.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I didn't see anything glaring.
I'm good.
Mark?
I'm good.
Rob?
I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Police department update.
Should we do citizens' comments first?
Oh, that's a good point.
Thank you.
Sit back down, chief.
False alarm, chief. Citizens' comments, items not on the agenda. Mary?
Mary McIntyre. As many of you know, I've been hearing numerous accounts regarding REC and Friends of REC, and I've written, and I've spoke, and I've recently submitted, on a couple of occasions, volunteer applications. And this has been going back and forth, sometimes I get replied to, sometimes I don't, between Mike and John, volunteer forms, applications. And we've talked about it here, that we need volunteers.
The volunteer form will be resolved this week, period. The grade, Mike?
In any which way, I'm going to finish saying what I want to say, if you will allow me, just that I am a volunteer, and I'm giving a lot of my time. It was noted in today's email that there's another volunteer in town giving a lot of time, but must be it's advantageous to be at somebody's elbow. Unfortunately, I work 40 hours a week, and I do a lot of my volunteering in the evening, and I write emails, and I write programs, and I solicit people and other volunteers to do a lot of programs at the recreation center. And when I take my time to write an email, or to text somebody, who it's their paid job, and I'm doing it on my volunteer time, I would like a response in a timely manner, maybe not within hours, maybe not that day, but the next day seems pretty reasonable to me. So I really believe that there are people out there willing to volunteer, which is, and there's plenty of tasks for them to do. Thank you.
Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Anything else? Yes, sir?
Mike, I just got a question.
You've got to come up to the podium so that Mike will pick you up your speech, Mike.
I'm kind of on my way there right now.
Okay.
Because I used to be.
Some people like to stand back there and talk, and it's much easier just to...
I was headed up here.
It's like I forgot to ask everyone to turn their cellphone ringers off, so if you haven't done so, please do so.
Yeah, yeah. So I get the Castleton REC Director's Weekly Report every Monday, which is great, and I commend John on authoring it. He does a great job. I just got a question regarding adventure camp. Residents, it's $100; non-residents, it's $125. It'll begin the week of July 7th. Tennis in the Parks, Frank Johnson runs that. Registration is $85 for that. Drawing for beginners is $75 per person. That's another program that the REC is out. Learn a line dance is $10 per session. Again, another really great program. I guess my question is, the fees that are being charged, does the money go to the recreation committee, or the recreation department, excuse me, the fees collected? Or does it go to the individuals who are conducting the programs? And if it goes to the individuals, or a portion of it does, what percentage of it does? I mean, if it's volunteer, great, and all the money's going to the REC department? That's fantastic. I was just wondering, is it all going to the REC department, or some of it to those who are conducting the classes?
I don't know if I have an answer to that right now.
I think I could answer that.
Then go ahead, Mark.
So it's not consistent across all of those programs. So the adventure camp has paid people that work for the town, and there are also volunteers involved. The programs at the REC center, some are conducted by people that have volunteered, in which case those fees go back to offset the REC budget. They go back into the recreation department, correct?
Yes.
So when we vote next week, I think the REC budget is about $160,000?
160, 170, somewhere in there, Mark.
We anticipate about $70,000 will come back. Most of that for admission charges to Crystal Beach, but some of it from REC programs. So there are some programs that people have volunteered to do, and others that they want to be paid a stipend for.
So of the ones I listed here, do you know if those are volunteer, or if the fees go back to the REC department?
I don't have that answer.
And I guess as a follow-up to that, tennis in the parks, which I'm all for, I'm a little confused by it, in that it is conducted at the tennis courts, of course, up at the college, which is fine, but that program isn't specific to the REC department. I guess what I'm getting at is, I know that, and I'm all for the recreation department, believing, I'm funding it, but are somebody's window dressing to show that we have programs going? And they're not directly related to this building?
Well, I think that we want to have robust recreation opportunities in the town.
Yep.
And some of them need indoor space and some don't. Some of them, we don't have the appropriate indoor space for a swimming program, but we do for basketball, line dancing, pickleball, so...
So was the tennis, for example, and I guess the simple question is, was the tennis in the parks program generated by this recreation department, or was it an existing program that was absorbed by?
I don't believe it was in existence last year. You know, we're trying to come up with new recreation programs every year, and they fit in all different places.
All right, good. Well, that's your answer, thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Some of the programs, Mike, are, they're being right now offered as exploratory, like, see if there's enough interest to do it. Some of the things like horticulture, or the swing dancing, there was charges that people paid, and we weren't in the process at that time of charging for the space, we were trying to work that out. And so that sense, we have a fee schedule, I brought it with me. So the goal is to charge for the space. What they charge to do their program is up to them. So if they pay their $75, or whatever, $25 an hour for the space, and they make a little extra money by the fees that they're charging, that's, as long as they pay us, which covers the cost of the use of the building and time, that's how it's really supposed to work.
So how do you figure what they pay you based on the fee that they charge? Is there a percentage, a flat?
It's a flat. So like, right now, the use of a classroom is $25 per hour, the gym is 75.
Okay.
So if they rent the space for the hour, they pay us the 75. If they charge 100 for someone to participate, they're keeping the 25. And we're having it so it goes through a HAGOV point-of-sale platform, and that's proven to have its challenges, building the forums and stuff in there. But that's the ultimate goal, is it goes through HAGOV, and you rent the space, and what you charge is what you charge, but you're going to pay the town a fee that covers a cost for running the place. And I think these fees are too low, to be quite honest with you, and so it's going to come before the Select Board for a decision, but $25 an hour is...
Reasonable.
Yeah, it's pretty darn reasonable. And then there's monies that come in that make donations, and I think the Friends of REC were collecting or got some of that money that would come in in the form of donations, as they're the 501(c)(3), they're the tax-exempt, they're nonprofit. So the ultimate goal is, we charge for the use of the space, and anything above and beyond that is, whatever they make, they make.
Okay, all right, well, great, thank you.
I think it's fair to say that we're building this airplane while we fly it. So, you know, there's a lot of unknowns yet, but I think that we're going to build a robust recreation department that, you know, really...
Well, you've got a good start, for sure.
We have a really good start, and we will have to, because it's new to all of us, you know, the funding portion, we're building as we go.
I will say that we also have built into our budget small stipends, so if somebody, let's say you want to volunteer to teach children archery, we can give you a small stipend that will help cover some of your expenses. You know, you're not going to get rich doing it, but, you know, at least you won't have to pay to volunteer.
Well, you might attract volunteers.
Yeah, that's the whole idea. So, you know, and that's already built into the budget, we're still, like Mike said, we're still making this up as we go. But that's in there so that we can do that, to make it a little more attractive for a volunteer to, it's not like when I was a Boy Scout leader, where I used to have to pay to volunteer.
One more thing on that, like, one of the things that a meeting I had with Andy Vermelier, who's the president of the Friends of REC, to come up with some kind of community calendar that, even though it's not a REC department-specific event, or maybe it's not a Friends of REC-sponsored event, but to let people know there's things going on in the community, so if tennis is not, which just, for example, wasn't a program, was offered by either of those groups, it lets somebody know what's going on in town. So that was part of the intent, I guess.
Thanks, Mike. Hi, Mary.
Can I just add one other little tidbit?
Only if you do it at the podium.
Okay.
That way the Zoom mic picks it up.
I know we're all over the map with how Mary Droge, I guess I'm speaking from the commission now, my knowledge, some programs, the people are buying materials. I know this is true for drawing, so it sounds expensive, but people are getting all the materials they need as part of that. So I think they're paying a room rate, and she's paying herself a little bit, but she's also buying a lot of materials with that cost. So it is just another example of how it's working.
Mary, would you stay at the podium? I don't know who can answer this question, Mary McIntyre, yourself, the town manager, but I attended the Friends of REC, one of their meetings, and I was a little confused. You guys have your own budget, you've got like $7,000 in your budget. I guess I was under the impression, when Friends of REC was created, anything you guys collect at the REC department, which I assume that's where most of the $7,000 came from, was going to go back into the REC commission. I must be totally wrong, because you guys have your own budget, so I don't understand. And then at that same meeting, and I could be wrong with this too, Mary McIntyre, you said you collected $60 at the door, and you had that in your possession, from people coming through the door. Is that money going to go to the REC, or is that something you guys keep, or I guess I'm confused as to what?
Yeah, so it is confusing, and Mary can join in too, but we've collected money through a lot of fundraising, to be fair. We did a coin drop, we did the concert, 50/50, we did the turkey trot, you know, all those things. So that's like ordinary 501(c)(3) fundraising. We have used the building ourselves, and I think our understanding with Mike is that eventually the town will invoice us for having used the building, and will, so basically send us a bill, and we'll send some money, whatever's appropriate, right? So we talked about it.
Yeah, since that conversation, Mary, we had, that you can go online, that's the point, you'll be able to go online and secure the space that you need.
Right.
So you won't get an actual invoice from us.
Right. And then beyond that, I think you've heard quite a bit how we're putting it out there in the public that we want to fundraise for a new gym floor that's estimated to be in the ballpark of $100,000. So we're going to try to raise that money and keep it in our bank account, and then pay with approval from the Select Board for that to happen. So we are going to accumulate money, to be fair, in order to eventually do something bigger, maybe it's the stage eventually, or something in the home bathroom, but, yeah. Did I represent all that?
The thing with Friends of REC is that we're 501(c)(3). So if someone wants to donate $10,000 towards that new floor, if they can do it as a tax write-off through us, if they give it to the town, what happens to them?
It goes into a fund, and doesn't carry over either.
Right.
So you make a donation, at the end of the fiscal year, it goes away. And so it's better that it goes through a nonprofit.
So when there needs to be something, that's the line of communication. Like, for example, we needed seating near the doors, or somewhere through that hallway. So Friends of REC got a donation, and there are two benches in there. That didn't cost the town, I think, that came through Friends of REC. Same thing with athletic equipment. We find out that they need supplemental things, we will buy it and put it in, and it doesn't cost the town anything. So that money isn't for us to go on any vacation.
No, no.
That is all just waiting for communication, and as we've all said, this is a work in progress, but this is so that we can collect money, and it doesn't have to, no disrespect, but it doesn't have to come through you guys for every little thing that they need. They can just come to us and say, "Oh, yeah, we have the money for that. Here you go, go buy it, or pay for it."
So the fees that you collect for pickleball, that you hold in the REC department?
No.
No?
Those go through the town.
They are going through, okay.
That's what they go.
Okay, so some do and some don't?
Right. I happen to oversee pickleball.
Okay.
And I make sure everybody's paid and all that, and it's scheduled and all of that. But the town gets every bit of money. And like for February, we're up to 36 members, and it's about half and half. $15 for, when I say half and half, about, half of the 36 people are Castleton residents, the other half is out-of-town residents. So out-of-town pays $20 for them on, Castleton residents or property owners pay $50. So that money's all going to the town of Castleton. We did an open gym, and I say "we," Friends of REC sponsored it. We had the volunteers that were there, and we had people come in, and we collected, we asked for $2. I think I collected $68 yesterday in cash. So now I just have to turn that over. Bit of a challenge, working enrollment 40 hours a week, to figure out how we're going to drop this off, you know, through the money box or whatever. But it's all, one way or the other, coming back to me.
Okay. I will add, the advantage of a 501(c)(3) makes things a lot less complicated, because when you try to go through municipal accounting with some of these funds, especially if it's going to be two or three years in the making, if they want to do a big project, municipal accounting in our state statute makes it much more cumbersome. It's much less complicated to do it as a nonprofit.
And most of, I can't think of a single friend or person that's got a dime, I think you've all been just volunteers.
Yeah.
I know I haven't collected a thing, and I will voice that it hurts my heart a little bit to think that you're doling out stipends before we really are trying to get volunteers.
We haven't doled out a stipend yet, but it's there, it's in the budget if we need to do that, and it depends on what it is, you know, if some...
Well, you keep advertising it as stipends, stipends, and nobody's going to volunteer because they're going to wait and hold out for a stipend.
Well, you also have to be very aware of Vermont wage in our law. Stipends aren't all that easy to give. There are definite rules.
Well, stipends truly are for, if someone wants to be a program lead, like, somebody opening the, we have dedicated people to open the building, close the building, make sure that kind of stuff was being done, so the building is secure. We've had people go in, I mean, I think, I'm at my wit's end with the key control thing, and we're going to go back to the cards, and that people can't be in there at 11 o'clock at night, that we don't know that, just because they can't sleep that night, they want to get up and go down to the gym, or go down to whatever, and set the alarm off, because that happened. And then I'm woken up about alarm going off there, send police department down there to figure it out. Like, why the hell is someone in there at 11:30 at night? So we've got to get a handle on the key control, but the stipends were for leads, so we can have that kind of stuff, because the REC director works 40 hours a week, and if this is on a weekend, and we have, if we have to, it's long-term, if we have to be able to pay someone to do that, because to make the program work, would you rather have the program or not have the program? It might come down to that. So I get the volunteers, I'm not crapping on anybody in this room about volunteerisms, but sometimes when you don't have volunteers, you've got to have a plan B. And it's $1,500 out of the budget. We haven't used a dime of it in two years. So maybe we never will, but it's there if we need it.
Go ahead, Ray.
All right, now, we just recommend the Select Board ask for a accounting or a balance sheet from the Friends of REC for safety reasons every three months or so.
I've asked for that for the last year. Maybe not directly from the Friends of REC.
You haven't asked from Friends.
No, that's correct. But the REC department in whole. I'm still looking for it from John Alexander, I guess.
I've got it, because you've got it. Because it's not that easy to get.
Okay.
So Christine pulled it down for me, so I have a to-date, well, as of end of January.
Okay.
So I'll have that for the, but it wasn't, it's not as simple as just going into HAGOV, and you've got to know how to navigate HAGOV, and...
Yep.
She's about the only one that knows how to make that thing sing.
Anything else for citizens' comments? Now we'll move on. Chief Mantello, please.
Good evening.
Okay.
Mine's in my truck. This is on the table. You get all the copies?
Yep.
So let's go over the January 2025 monthly report for calls. January, January normally is a slower month for us, for a number of reasons, so we were down, let's see, we had 522 calls, so we're down from 74 calls that were in December. Weather definitely played a part. This is what we call, someone said to me today, "Old-fashioned winter," I said, "I know, gosh, I can't remember when we had winters like this." So it obviously affected a lot of things, what we do.
Back to the bay, right?
If you look down the service calls, nothing really stands out that I see, I mean, accidents, we are up more, you know, because of the fact of the weather. I mean, accidents, we are up more, you know, because of the fact of the weather. Suspicious persons, that's always fluctuates, up a little bit there, down on traffic stops, which is which is, and we did a lot of VIN inspections, thanks to Brown's auto. It's always good. Any questions on the service call?
Chief, could you define for me directed patrols?
So those are initiated either proactively, well, technically it's a proactive patrol. So we will, there are certain areas that we cover, whether it's Main Street, Drake Road, Blissville. Green Dump is always, Creek Grove's a big one in the summer, spring and fall, winter time, we don't do a lot of them up there. But we do check up there. So those are those are designated areas that we've had issues with, whether it's traffic, whether it's suspicious people, that kind of thing. Especially with the, we had that last rash of larcenies and car thefts.
And that seems to have gone away now?
Yeah, I'll touch on that.
Okay.
I think remind me, because I've got a couple of things to bring up that I thought was really good. For mill arrests, we only had three arrests in January. January, like I said, normally is a, because we had eleven in December, is normally, not that people aren't committing crimes, just they're not getting caught.
That doesn't bode well for you, chief.
I know, I know. I get always blaming on the weather, right? But really, the reports, even people calling in, so, you know, you got people calling in for complaints and stuff, they've gone down a little bit because in January. Traffic, like I said, weather played a huge role in that. When it's, you know, snow on the road, you're really not gonna run, you're either running to accidents or people are sliding off. You're not really getting involved in that. So let's talk about some updates. So we did finally recover the last stolen vehicle in Rutland City last Thursday. Which was probably in Rutland City, that Ford Explorer that was taken off South Street, which was my case. They ended up smashing the car, they all fled, nobody caught anybody. But we were able to secure quite a bit of, I think, good DNA evidence that were sent up. Do we have any suspects? No. Obviously, it happened in the city. I sent an officer to go to Carreras, follow it up, bring in inside R and Ds and then we did the recovery for the evidence there. So we had, none of those are missing. We haven't had any complaints on thefts, unlawful mischief to vehicles. So moving forward, I have made some changes in the schedule. So I don't want to say too much, this is a public forum, I don't want to tell everyone's doing it.
Exactly.
I told Mike, our Mike knows, we made some, because we just can't keep this up. It's a lot, a lot of hours and it affects my budget. So there's things that we have to do, will probably be, you know, that'll probably increase later on as it will as the weather gets warm, because that's usually the times that we normally would have it, would be always in May, June, July. Those are the three big months where you have the transient populations, the normal, I want to shop in a neighborhood and unlock doors and find, you know, my grocery list. That's usually when it happens mostly. But we'll see.
Hopefully you can keep some social media posts going on that to remind people to lock their doors and not leave the keys in their car.
Yeah.
Or it seems like there's no forced entry.
No, there's not, not one of them. I'm hoping in two, at least three of the seven cases that we had of the vehicles, I'm really hoping this, that the evidence comes back and hits on somebody. We did some control swabs on people that own the car, we have to send that up with. And if there's same, and if there's anything that comes up that doesn't match that one, we'll run it through CODex, which is the federal database for anybody that's a convicted felon, it's gonna show because when you're a convicted felon, you have to give your DNA into nationally. If that doesn't work, we do have some possible suspects where we could request a non testimonial order and go that way for a court order. So I'm hoping at least three of them. The other ones, it's hard. But the last, the two of the, two of the, because I think I told you before, two of the seven vehicles that were taken, one was burned in Pittsburgh, so I couldn't get any evidence out of that one. And then this last one, which was recovered. Do I think those are the same people? No. And well, that's that's a unique one, I have no idea who did that one. When you want to torch a car, there's usually a reason, more than cover a fingerprint. And that was in Pittsburgh, on a back road that, and I lived in this area quite a while, I never went down that road. Goes right to the railroad tracks.
What was the name of the road?
It's off of Elm, so if you take um street off that corner where the store is, like the second right. Any other questions? That's kind of what I asked tonight.
Questions for the chief?
You had ten calls to the university?
Yeah.
And one in January. Would you venture a guess what you averaged there? In a month?
You mean ten, I mean, one in December.
Yeah, I'm sorry, one in December.
Usually the break. There's usually the break period, so we don't usually get busy, but ten. We had two alcohol offenses.
Is ten pretty normal?
Uh, no, we've been averaging like anywhere from five to seven to eight maybe. Ten's pretty high, this is a pretty high one. When I first came here, it was a lot higher than this, but this is high in the last couple of years.
Average would probably be around seven, Mark, maybe a little less than that even?
Okay.
I mean, you look at, you know, the suspicious people, those are people probably in the parking lot. Public safety's kind of limited what they can do, so.
Does public safety call you on that, Pete?
Yes.
They call you?
They will do that.
Okay, so most of these ten were calls from them?
About looking at them all, I'm I'm gonna say probably seventy-five percent of them. Sometimes somebody will call, a student will call on the, that happens to be on the property and call via phone to nine one one or whatever.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Go ahead, Mike.
So just so the boards are aware, I did get calls, the call volume for PD, first response and the fire department over the last for last year and up to date, as part of that process to go to the university with enough information to ask them, to show them the call volume and explain to them that first responders and the fire department are volunteers and the continual burnt popcorn calls and those type of things. Those are volunteers are waking up in the middle of the night and going to these calls and spending hours sometimes out there. And I'm gonna go back to the university, like I did a few years ago, and ask them to provide some money to the town for some specific reasons for like training, like the fire department, they paid for training so the fire department could go to the burn building at the academy one year. And they gave two thousand for the for the PD, but those were low numbers, that was seven thousand dollars total. We haven't received a dime, asked for a dime, not received, haven't asked for a dime in the last three years. So that's that's my my intent is to schedule a appointment with the president of Vermont State University and have that discussion, try to do it when when they're coming down here. To just show them that there's there's time and effort and and resources that go to the calls. First response goes there quite a bit, too.
Break up on the ladder truck too, aren't you?
Of course.
That was the main reason.
Why we have it.
That's.
And now the fourth floor up there really makes it more important.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Well, we know those services cost about five hundred dollars per capita for people that live in the town if you divide up the budgets of the police department, fire department, EMS.
But one of the things that I'm still working on is the the towns that surround Johnson, Linden, Williston, Randolph, how they are, if they, any agencies bill them directly or how they do that so that if it's already a precedence in some areas, it might be easier to explain or ask for support from the university or from the Vermont State University. So just so you know, it's, I've got some more, Justin did a lot of the research for me to find out what fire departments and EMS and police departments were charged in some places. Some places are sheriff's department, some places is town, and some places is state police, depending on the location, so.
UVM pays the city of Burlington. That was, you can look that up, that's public.
Yeah, I talked to the fire chief in Burlington, Steve, before he left, Locke, before he left there a couple of years ago. And they they charge for false alarms or or calls for burnt burnt food and that kind of stuff. They give them, I forgot off the top of my head, I think it was two, they get for free and after that, it's like five hundred plus dollars. It goes up. So some places do that kind of, that billing. We're not certainly the call volume of Burlington, but but there's gotta be some way I can get my point across to the president of Vermont State University.
Well, I think finding out what happens in Linden and Randolph, although a long way starts knowing what's appropriate here.
Yeah.
One of the things, the disconnect that we've had since they've gone to the state university system, I mean, there's a disconnected communication with the local Ds that used to work here and stuff. It's totally changed, it's not different. It was someone might, you know, you gotta go up the corporate ladder and get somebody to look at it. All right.
Any other thing, oh, that's from chief, are you able to put a car in the bay now?
We have to take out the, what did Justin take out? The farthest bay over, what was in that? I think it was, there was something in there that they ended up, ended up moving out that during one of the storms. Access to it.
Trying to find space in there, they tried it one, but until now that we got rid of the old ladder truck. We, they only.
I think they had them moved, where's, which bay is the quad in or the?
I don't know.
That's still on the trailer, right? Right there?
It was on a trailer, it was on the, on the utility trailer.
It's on the utility trailer.
That's, that may be in the second one way over.
They were able to squeeze one in, but it was not a lot of room.
Yeah.
Trying to, especially during the storms, so that there's a car that's not buried under ice and snow.
Yeah.
That's it, thank you.
Okay.
Let's talk about rec commission appointments.
Just so you're aware, Martha Clifford, Nedra Batwell, and Mary Jo Teeter and do better on Zoom. So Martha's probably on for this.
So last week, at the last meeting, we had decided to postpone any discussion about appointing Josh Ferguson to the rec commission. Since either prior to that, I don't recall exactly what the chronology was, but we had discussed changing the charter for the rec commission, the first paragraph to to change just from five to nine appointed members and add the verbiage that the majority of which are required to be Castleton residents. And Martha was on board with that. So we're, we've already in the board, I believe we discussed this as a board and agreed that that was a good change and in which case Mark and I can craft the appropriate language and get that included. Now, in the meantime, it's been suggested by our rec director that we add a Castleton, Vermont State University Castleton representative to the rec commission. I'm not opposed to that, but I would suggest that we craft language into our charter that says that this person could be included or may be included, but they would have a non voting status, is my opinion. And then it was suggested by the town manager that we even reach out to the high school to see if there if there was a young person at the high school that would love to serve on the commission as also as a non voting member, what would be able to contribute insight and thoughts that somebody of my vintage may not think of. So I'm just throwing that out there for the rest of the board to consider, so thoughts or opinions? Go ahead, Mark. You go first, please. Do you have any thoughts on this?
I I think I would want to defer to the rec commission to see their thought, you know, see what their thoughts are on it.
Well, by all means, I want their input as well. I just told you what my opinion was. If we did this, I think it would be a non voting membership. And I think that that's.
Absolutely non voting, since it's apt, you know, a student population is transient, so it's gonna change.
And there may or may not be a student mem, you know, a student delegate to our rec commission, but if there was, they would, you know, be eligible to participate in discussions but not eligible to vote.
Yeah, they may have really good ideas and certainly any experience that a young person has like that is beneficial to them in the future, so. Yeah, as long as they're not voting, I think it's great.
But I do agree that we need to get the rec commission's input before we make any decision on this.
I would agree with that.
Likewise.
Absolutely.
So Martha, do you want to speak to this now or do you want to defer and have some time to chew on this over and then come back to us and talk to your other members?
Well, I know I I've shared it all with the rec commission members. And I did send Mike an email and included John with some other things that I'd like you to consider, especially with that, the Vermont, the college student. And I don't have it right in front of me, so I'm not quite sure. I know that one of them was a non voting member. And if we ever reach the number nine for the commission, that this this college student or non voting member could not take up a seat of that ninth person on the commission. And I'm gonna shout to Mary Droegery to see, there was, there was some, there were two other things on there that we talked about. Do you remember, Mary?
Yeah, should I go?
Yes.
The other, the other two things I see on the email is that it be a temporary appointment. So is it, it's a year or maybe the semester year, I'm not sure, we'd have to figure that out. And does this person count towards a quorum? So that was just a question.
Certainly not. If they're a non voting member, they have no, they don't contribute to a quorum at all.
Right. So, yeah, and then the the non voting and then not taking a seat if we ever get to nine. So they would be in addition to the nine if we got nine voting members.
I would agree with that. Do you agree with that?
I agree with that.
Agree with that?
We are very excited about the idea of having this feedback from the college community. It'd be great.
If the rest of the board is agreeable, Mark and I will put our heads together and craft some language and come up with a new first paragraph in the charter and then submit it to Martha and you to get your input. And then if you like it and we like it, then we'll submit it to the board and get the board's approval and put it in place.
Sounds great.
And I would think that we would do it so this student would.
Thank you.
Would be appointed by the rec commission and not the select board.
I like that idea.
So we wouldn't have to revisit this every year because there was a new student. It's something they could do internally.
And they can also, you know, appoint that individual for the semester or for two months or five years, whatever is appropriate.
Whatever they feel is appropriate.
Yeah, and then they can control their destiny there. Martha, would you like us to add language that you could also include a non member or non voting member from the high school if that ever comes up? Or do you want to wait until that does come up?
Um, I think I'd like to talk to the commission about that because we have not not even ventured to the high school level, yeah.
Okay, well, would you do that and then, because if we're gonna rewrite this, I mean, it's not a heavy lift to rewrite it. So if we wanted to eventually include a high school member, we, you know, something we should consider.
Could we just leave it as a student? To say that the rec commission could appoint up to two student non voting members annually?
At their discretion or something like that.
Yeah.
We can, what do you think, Martha? Martha, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I I think that's okay.
And then you would have all the responsibility and discretion, you wouldn't have to come here and ask the the select board if you could appoint another person. This would be just for this non voting member class.
That would give you all the authority and all the responsibility to do it as you see fit, Martha.
No, I I'm okay with that. It's, it's hard to, you know, I, I do have Mary here, there, that would, whether, whether she's going to agree or not, but there are two other commission members that have not been consulted.
So why don't you run it by your commission and then get back to us and then we'll go forward with it.
Okay, I will do that in the next couple of days and get back to you.
Okay. I don't think it'll take you, you and I long to do this, Mark.
Nope.
Now, do we want to move forward with Mr. Ferguson? Or not at this point?
So I received a call from him just prior to the meeting that a, a member of a close family passed away today and he wasn't able to make it to this meeting. He still wants to be appointed, and if we didn't want to do that in his absence, he would be available at the next meeting two weeks from now.
I think that would be good to have him come two weeks from now.
Then we'll table that for two weeks. Sounds like a plan. Okay, that might give us time to get this rewritten, Mark.
Yep.
So we're going to move on. Thank you, Martha, for your input. Thank you, Mary. So the rail, the rail trail council update is postponed for a future meeting, so let's move on to talk about the reappraisal, Tyler Technologies. That would be, John, you're up.
Thank you.
Please introduce yourself with your last name and everything when you get to the podium, please.
I have a presentation that I'd like to connect to the, is that all right?
Yeah. Now, this.
I haven't been able to connect.
Oh, you're still.
That'll change it.
It's not, I mean, maybe Mike, you can help.
Well, it's a thumb drive, if you have it on a thumb drive. I have a thumb drive, yeah. They should be able to put it in there.
And then just tell me when to flip side, slide.
Well, thank you, everybody, for inviting me back. We are, pretty much have finished our data collection. There's probably a few more properties I will visit. We are getting to the point where we're going to be posting our notices of new value. I created a presentation to go over some of the things that we've done and reappraisal in general. I'll try to move it quickly. We have, we can have questions at the end, or if anyone has any questions, they can interrupt and I'll answer their questions. So I'm John Vickery. I'm the project, senior project manager for this project. I brought Jacob Darman, who is the associate project manager. We'll have a list of the others that will be in this project.
Where's this? I'm, I'm getting the thing up here in my hand.
There's a lot of slides.
While he's looking for that, have you finished it? Have you visited all the houses or drive-bys or? I haven't seen your my place.
I will, I will talk about that, but yes, we have stopped at every home in town and pretty much every single property.
I haven't seen you.
Well, we will come to your house if you like.
No, you don't need to come to that. I'm just saying, are you doing it by drive-by?
No, no, we've knocked on every door.
You haven't been to my house either, not that I know of. If, if nobody's home, what, do you leave a card on the window or on the door?
Yeah, I'm going to explain some of the things that we've done. But yes, we leave a card, we put lots of notices out as well as sent out data mailers early on with instructions to file online here for requests for inspections. And we also emailed a lot of folks. I have a, a slide on about some of the things that we've done. So I'll start. That's a good screen to start with. These are the folks that have worked on this project since the beginning and all the way from the, the project supervisor to residential inspectors. Next slide. I'm going to briefly talk about what a reassessment is, the reassessment process, and then at the end, the change of notices and the hearings. Go to the next one. We gave a value as April 1st, 2025. You'll have your new values at that point. The reason why we need assessments might be because the values have been inconsistently changed over the course of the past 10 years since the last reappraisal in 2015. Assessments are unequal at this point, and the state of Vermont mandated this reappraisal. So our goal is to correct and collect missing data. Go to the next slide. Some of the challenges and fears are that as a result of the reappraisal, people will pay more taxes, they'll discover hidden improvements, government will spend more money and shift in the tax base. There'll probably be some shifting in the tax base. Fears dispelled, go to the next slide. So the goal here is to pay tech taxes based on equity, you know, equal values, collect hidden improvements, provides foundation for fairness. There's always a shift in assessment by class that promotes greater fairness. Government doesn't spend more money. It's, there's a concept called revenue neutral. Government will spend the amount of money that's been approved in the budget. Revaluation goals are to abide by the International Association of Assessing Officers, follow Use PAP guidelines, and to target the appraisal needs of the uniqueness of Castleton and their different types of properties in different locations. Go to the next slide. Market values is April 1st, 2025. We will try to put values at their, at market of what they could sell for. The range is usually between 90 and 100%. Go to the next slide. Data, the process, phases of revaluation is the data collection, which are the data mailers. And we've been doing data collection up until most recently. We run, are running analysis now and changing a lot of valuation tables. And then we'll be applying those new valuation tables based on the market to the unsold properties. And then we'll have a process, the last phase will be meeting with people about their particular property in March and April, actually closer to April. Yes, this, this slide here is showing that the hearings are sort of the last piece of the pyramid and everything else that went before that. That was from data collection to modeling and value assessment. This is a data mailer that we mail to all property owners. And this data mailer has a link to a website that we have that is attached to the town website. It also, it also invites folks to schedule inspections or we will schedule for them. And we ask that everyone give us a call or email us to conduct inspections of their property. Thank you, Mike. This is what we've done in the gathering process. The letter that you see on the right side is a letter that we would drop off to people's homes. We sent out data mailer letters to all residents. We emailed 827 inspection request letters as a result of those data mailers. We visited all approved properties. We photographed all the properties and the lakefront properties, we actually photographed them by the lake. It's a better view of the property and you get a better sense of value. We dropped off letters requesting inspections. We have posted multiple requests to inspect on Front Porch Forum and Facebook. We provide an online scheduling calendar for self-scheduling and inspections. And probably what's not here is that we have what we call a micro website that is attached to the assessor's website that explains frequently asked questions and the appraisal process and so forth. So all of these tools have been provided to help citizens of the town here to better understand what we're doing. Field inspection process, almost all approved properties have been inspected. Exterior inspections count for 1,654 or 77% of the properties. Full interior inspections accounted for 476, which is a 23%. Over 133 sales on the MLS have been reviewed online. And if you ever looked at MLS, multiple listing service, you will see multiple photos of interior, exterior with property descriptions and, and property data. That's a very valuable tool in making sure that those properties are valued as correct as possible. So our team actually did a visual review of the front and sides of the buildings. They use lasers to measure, measure angles on a, on a building. And that's a really quick way of measuring a, a front or a front porch or a side porch. If they, nobody was at the door, they would not go around the back and invade some privacy unless allowed or given, allowed to, to do that. A review of the exterior property data on the physical record card, verifying the roof type, the story height, the foundations, citing all those windows and physical condition and other types of components. The inspector varied, verified interior data when the owner and, when the property owner did not allow interior inspection. This is considered an exterior only inspection. That's, okay, thank you. Castleton pre-reappraisal. The Vermont Tax Department in 2024, the equalization or the common level of appraisal, which is a measure of the market to assessments, indicated a 61% of market since the last reappraisal in 2015. So obviously, in most cases, everyone's value is going to increase in, in town here. I think a more important measure is the coefficient of dispersion, and that's 20, over 20%. And that's also unacceptable by, by the International Association of Assessing Officers or the state of Vermont. And that's why this reappraisal was mandated to be conducted. Go to the next slide. So we're reviewing the final results, but where we're at right now, this is a statistical measure, as you measure the, the other page. Right, right now, we're showing a level of assessment for the town of Castleton at 98%. Remember, it was 61 on the other screen. Coefficient of dispersion was above 20. Now it's showing just under 7%. I, I'm not sure if anyone knows what a price-related differential or price-related bias is, but it's a measure of vertical equity. And our goal here is to appraise the high-value properties equally with the low-value properties and vice versa. So we run this other statistical measure as a check to see if we are evaluating all types of properties at all levels of, of value equitably. And they all meet standards at this point. Mike, we'll go to the next slide. I'm going to show you a series of slides of the change of value. And this is an example, and I want to apologize if I pull someone's house up without warning. So this, this property in 2015 sold for $710,000. It more recently sold in 2024 for $1.4 million. 98% increase. Go to the next slide. This is a lakefront.
North end of the lake.
Here's another value change. This property in 2015 was 332,400. It recently sold for 900,000. That's a, that's a big increase. 171% increase. We go to the next slide. There you go. Mike's ahead of me. Residential value increase of a village property. This particular property sold in 2015 for 71,300. It just recently sold in 2024 for 160,000. Do you see the differences increases as I, I show you with different screens? They are all over the place. And our goal is to put properties at what they sell for. Go to the next slide. Residential value change in a rural area. This particular property in 2015 sold for 130,000 and it just recently sold for 230,000. We'll move to the next slide. Here's a residential value change that in 2015, it sold for 308,300. And it more recently sold for 560,000, an 82% increase. See, everyone's getting an increase by different rates in the market, just, it's just the market. And so we're going to be calibrating our values to the market. Residential condominium. There's not many condominiums in town here. This one in 2015 sold for 89,000. It more recently sold for 160,000. Go to the next slide. Here's the mobile homes. Mobile homes have really increased tremendously, not just here, but every other place I've worked. In 2015, this was $50,000. And today, it's worth 110. It's 120% increase. Sort of summing it all up, market analysis from 2015 to 2024, lake properties typically around 360,000. And now the lake typical property is, is 790. If you look at the medium DOAM, which means days on the market, you'll see from 2015 to 2024, you'll see those days how they drop. The first example is 85 days and the second example is 22 days. And then if you look at the rural, too, 157,000, now at 327,000. That is 129 days, that was kind of a long amount. Now it would sell in the neighborhood of 10. Most sales are selling if they're priced right, which means 10 to 20 days right now. Go to the next slide. So next steps in the process are to, when we make our, our values more public and we send them out and everyone has noticed, they'll get a, a, a letter from us and it will describe what to do, where they can look online, how to obtain information about their property. And we welcome the fact, we welcome them to review their property data, make some judgment on the value. And if they have questions, they can schedule for a hearing time. And we encourage people to email documentations. This, this would include photos, appraisals and such. There'll be a, a deadline to schedule the hearing. That's to be determined at this point. Hearings will start in early April. We haven't specified the date yet, I'm sorry about that. And hopefully we'll have the results by the end of April, probably in May, actually. And then there'll be another opportunity from the Board of Assessors if they're unsatisfied with what we call our informal hearings with hearing officers with Tyler Technologies. And I guess this is another slide on hearings. That they're usually one-on-one by phone to make it convenient for property owners as well as us. Be able to supply and discuss appraisals, purchase and sales agreements, closing statements if you're a commercial property, income and expense data, tax returns, leases, anything that helps us understand what a fair value should be for your particular property. that helps us understand what a fair value should be for your particular property. And I'm ready for questions, and I can move back up to earlier slides if anyone has questions.
First, can you define COD for me, please?
It's a coefficient of dispersion.
Yes.
And what it is, is basically, it's a, it's a measure of the dispersion of whatever you're measuring. So if we're measuring houses, just single-family homes in this particular case, we will grab all the single-family homes, and we want to know, the wider the spread, the weaker the uniformity. The tighter the spread, the more uniform. It's a, it's an indicator that your data is more reliable and solid. And if it's wider, which happens over time, that's, it's not as, how should I say? It's, it has, it's less reliable when you have a wider spread. So when it, when it, when the spread spreads beyond 20%, then the state mandates a reappraisal for any town in Vermont, as an example, because they're saying there's un-uniformity, lack of uniformity. And when it's tighter, it shows uniformity.
I still don't understand if it's, maybe I'm dense, but what exactly are you, how do you calculate that? I don't get it because your, the houses haven't changed. The houses are still here. I mean, a few new ones have been built, and a few old ones have been raised. But basically, the same houses are here that were here 20 years ago.
Right. I guess what I'll do is I'll reverse a little bit how this invention, it's the relationship, starts off with the relationship of the market, what someone's willing to pay for a property, and the assessment. And that creates a ratio. Think of the first ratio, the median ratio. And the median ratio is how are we doing against what people are willing to purchase your property for? And the earlier slide, it showed that Castleton was around 61% of market before we started this project. Now we're at 98% of market, just underneath market, which is pretty solid. So then there's this other measure that takes that same ratio and puts them all together, defines the median of the ratio, the center, measures central tendency. And then it says, we need to look at the dispersion. And if the dispersion is relatively tight, then it's basically saying it's more uniform. Have you ever heard of a bell curve?
Yes.
Bell curve goes like this.
Yep.
Goes like this. Sometimes the bell is spread out, and you have these outliers. There's always a few outliers. And if you have a lot of outliers, it's more spread out, then there's less reliability in the data. When it's tighter and more uniform, then it means that there's more fairness in the assessment values, neighbor to neighbor and so forth.
In March. And is that still a realistic goal? I know originally you said you were going to be doing them in February and March, and now we're looking at March. So I'm wondering, is that still realistic?
We, so we can certainly have the project finished, have the values done for the Board of Assessors, which we are going to assist the assessor with those meetings. And I think with three hearing officers that are all appraisers and someone else behind the scenes helping schedule people and so forth, I think that we could do, we could have hearings for a week, and then we could have another day a little farther off for folks that missed the date and so forth. But I think a week, the three hearing officers would, should, should do the job. And then there's, there's after that, our team will get together and will review each and every person that asked for a hearing and what they have brought and what they told us, and to make a determination of whether we should make an adjustment on the property or not.
So we have, you've done an interior and physical inspection of 23% of the properties?
Yes.
And I think I've heard somewhere antecdotally that the national average is 30% on a reappraisal? Is that true?
Usually, I don't know what that percentage is, but it's down that low. So it used to be 50%, 60% back when I started, about 30 years ago, 25 years ago. But people just don't let you in their house anymore. It's very hard to get into every single house. People are very private these days. There are two people working, and it's just, it's just more difficult. So we're not unusual. Our company is, it's about the average of any other company that would be sitting at this podium today.
I thought you had told our assessor recently that the national average was 30%. Was that true?
Did I say that?
Yeah. When we met, you said that 30% seemed average.
Yeah. That is about average.
They're 23, so I'm hoping that this will actually, because once you get done this, don't you have to submit this to the state for approval?
Well, they're, what they do, what the state of Vermont does is they, we hand over the reappraisal to them, and they run some, some tests themselves on the reliability of the, basically, they run statistical analysis on the appraisal that we've done, looking at the most recent sales. And they run those tests. And I'm pretty certain we're going to knock it out.
You're pretty confident?
I am confident.
Any more questions from the board? Go ahead, Mary Lee.
Are you saying that if you don't get inside the house, whether they don't want you to or you can't connect with them or whatever, that makes a difference on your appraisal?
Well, if someone has done improvements on the interior of their house and you don't know about it, there's not a lot we can do there. If most people, what I've seen is that the outside of their house is similar to the inside of their house in physical condition. There's not a huge, great difference. But we try to do the best we can. As you heard, we made multiple attempts to request inspections, to visit people's homes, to email folks, to send out notices asking for inspections. And the result that we have with all of these attempts is, statistically, is 23% right now.
Well, the very first, when you started, we got a one or two-page questionnaire.
Yeah.
Which I'll answer. But I haven't heard anything from you or anybody else since.
Well, we, someone stopped at your door.
You're lucky if you can find me a home anywhere. I know that. But there was nothing left at my door that someone had been there either.
We took all those data mailers and we entered the information that was provided or reviewed it. And we also sent emails to folks that provided their emails on those data mailers. And it was 850 approximately emails that we sent out to folks to say, hey, we would like to do an inspection of your property.
If there, I entered most of those data mailers personally. If there was a no at the bottom that said, please reach out to schedule an inspection, we certainly did. But if there wasn't any no on the data mailers, we sent them the traditional email request.
Personal or unpersonal or any letter or anything else?
Well, if you would like an inspection of the interior of your house.
I really don't care, but I'm just wondering how I might have the Taj Mahal inside. I don't.
Yeah. No, I think there's this perception that, obviously, we don't want to miss anything interior, exterior, so it's frustrating for us as it is for you. But oftentimes, the house, from the looks of it on the outside, is similar to the condition of the inside of the house. And really, what we're talking about is condition, because most of the other facts are usually pretty solid, regarding the amount of bathrooms and the square footage and the deck in the back and the shed and the, you know, that type of thing.
So you basically got a lot of that from that very first questionnaire?
We get someone at it. And we hope it's, that citizens are honest when they report those.
You also use the Lister Card, don't you?
Okay.
You also use the Lister Card, don't you? As part of your debt?
Oh, yes. So that's used as like a verification tool when we visit homes. So we'll have someone that stopped at your houses, and if no one was there, they reviewed the data that they had, and they're at the door. They would look at the measurements, and sometimes if something looked off, they would actually use their laser measure to measure the house.
So basically, a lot of it is just what you see? Like you said, I know the house without the porch is 24 by 40. My house is.
Yeah.
But you don't care whether it's four-bedroom or two-bedroom or whatever, inside, it doesn't make a difference?
Well, the bedroom count does not adjust the value in the system that we work in.
Did you physically do 23% of these interior? Or did you use the pictures like from homes that it sold as part of that?
No, that's not included.
Okay.
So there's another.
113.
Huh?
113.
133, I think it is.
Okay.
And actually, there's more than that. I looked at that. But I couldn't verify the 133 that are used as considered fair market sales in the past several years.
Is it not true that COVID drove prices up too? Like when you had 200,000 to 900,000 or something? Would that still be true three years from now? Or is it, it was driven up by COVID?
I don't know what's going to happen three years from now, but I feel with the interest rates rising, that the market is getting softer. So if you look at the time period, I've known this because I've worked in other places. The time period before COVID, the market was moving up quite robustly. Then, when COVID hit, it really started increasing tremendously. And I mean, we had placed towns that had 20% increase year to year. And then it slowed down about half of that, and now it's down about 6%. So it's, the market is softening. It'd be nice if it just leveled off for a couple of years. I would like that. But you are still in a period where most houses sell between 10 and 20 days. And so there's not enough supply product out there for the amount of buyers, and it's starting to change. And I've seen this in other communities. It's very similar to other communities.
So the people that did respond to schedule a visual inspection, did you meet all of those?
My team would have met them, not me personally.
But they were all, no? Anyone that responded to you and said, I would schedule?
Yeah.
Interior, exterior, whatever it was you wanted, they got a visit?
Yeah. And we would still do, and I imagine we're still going to do a few inspections through the informal hearings and Board of Assessor hearings, because someone may come and say, my house is not that big. Or they may say, my house is not in the, in the condition that you've assigned it. So we would say, well, let's schedule, let's schedule an inspection.
You're talking about the Board of Civil Authority?
I'm talking earlier. I'm talking about the Board of Assessors or?
We don't have a Board of Assessors.
Yeah, the Lister's office.
We don't have listers. We only have an assessor. So we have a Board of Civil Authority.
Oh, well, before that, we are going to have informal hearings and then result in more inspections.
Yeah, I understand that. But I'm saying, we don't, when, when you go past that point and you move on, we don't do a Board of Assessors. We do a Board of Civil Authority.
There's grievance here, is there, correct?
Yes, those are with the Board of Civil Authority.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we're using the right terminology.
Right.
Excuse me, can I just chime in? This is Mary Jo.
Mary Jo, can you wait, can you wait until the board is done, and then I'll ask for your input? And then I'll open it to the audience. So, Mark, are you done?
All right. I just wanted, okay, I just wanted to clearings. There is a, the next step is to come to the assessor. So that will be me. Tyler Technologies will participate in that, and the Board of Civil Authority is beyond that. So there is a, there is a step in between the Board of Civil Authority and the informal hearings.
Okay. Mark, are you done?
I think I'm good, as long as they can verify that everyone who responded did get a visit. There isn't more you can do.
Bob?
I had a very knowledgeable taxpayer raise his voice in regards that we did not have to do this reappraisal. Could you tell me if we told you not to do it, what the repercussions would have been?
The state of Vermont Tax Department dictates, and they send letters out to, based on their standards, if they're not compliant with certain statistical measures, similar to the measures I put on screen. They mandated this reappraisal. And they've mandated the reappraisals for many, many towns throughout the state of Vermont. And these towns are obligated to pursue a reappraisal in either by a company privately or internally themselves. They have to. Or what?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm asking.
Or what's the penalty?
What is the penalty?
Penalty, well, the thing that they usually say is that we will hold back education funding from the town.
That's what I assumed. But this person said that.
Have I seen that do that? No.
Yeah, this person said that would never happen.
Yeah.
Our CLA will go down, you know, and we could say bunny. With the reappraisal? Yeah. Yeah, it makes sense. We want to be, just like everything else, every consumer good, we want to make sure that the prices are accurate.
This isn't the first time he's come to me and said this to me. He's screaming at me, saying, you did not have to do this reappraisal. Why are you guys doing it? So I need an answer to him.
So it's equitable.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other part of this that I think sometimes people forget is the coefficient of dispersion measure is really more important, because properties don't appreciate at the same rate in different locations and different price points. So to correct those allows this, this reset, everybody's assumed value is at market and what it would sell for. That's the, that's the way it's been done for a long time, and that's a fairer way as far as I know. And so there are properties in certain locations that are going to be, have benefited from not having a reappraisal. And there's others that aren't paying the burden for that benefit that that other property has. You know, if every property appreciated the same exact rate, this would be easy. You'd just do an indexing, which you can't, because then it just continues the unfairness.
I'm done. So the, I've got a couple of minor, or a couple of other questions. So somewhere in this chronology, you have to inform the landowners of what their new value is, is proposed or assessed to be. So in the past, we had this document. And what is your plan for disseminating that information this time?
That's the booklet.
Oh, is that the booklet?
Yes.
So the booklet was pretty standard a long time ago, and we could still continue that standard if you'd like. We, what we're obligated to do is to notify everyone by letter, first-class mail, of their new value with information on it, how to go about a review of their property and to steps taken to have a hearing with us or to appeal their property value if they want. And that's what we're obligated to do. The more modern thing to do is to send the letters out, because that's required. We could send a booklet out in addition. But I would like it if the town were to consider putting the data online and having it online after we go away, like many other towns do. They have everyone's property you can look online. So you can review your own property, then you could go look at your neighbors, then you could go look at the property down the street that is the same size, same, very similar. How close are those two in value? Am I seeing some uniformity here? That's better than just seeing an end value in a booklet. And it probably would make people more settled about their value and have fewer hearings, in my opinion.
Well, this in essence does the same thing, but.
But you only see the end value. You see the total. When you can actually look at people's property data and find the best fit, oh, this other house has 1,500 square feet, just like mine. It's a colonial, just like mine, it's right down the road. Then you see those, those fits, and you see how, you see how we've, we're not such a black box, which the black box creates the hearings. But when you're out front with all of this stuff and you internal reviews, that's what we would recommend.
And that's all well and good for, for Mark, because he's pretty astute with the computer, and he's all handy. But what about Uncle Henry, who has no clue how to turn? Who has no clue how to turn, how to find a power switch on a computer? You know, that's, that's the thing that we have to, you know-
Hopefully Uncle Henry has an aunt, I mean, a niece or a nephew that can get them there. But if not, they could always come down to the town and ask for the property record card.
And is there some way that we could give Uncle Henry a document like this? Not necessarily publish three thousand copies, but if he asked for one, we could provide him with one without a heavy lift on town staff?
Yeah, that's pretty easy. That's just pulling the data out, lining it up on a spreadsheet, printing it off.
Because I think, I think that some people, including me, would find this useful just to refer. And then if I wanted to do a deeper dive on a few properties, I could.
Absolutely.
So I'm thinking we need to find some compromise between all online or having a printed document, because this is an expense that nobody wants. But there are some people that may really like this format.
Me too.
I wasn't talking about you. I was talking about Uncle Henry. But I'm sure that Uncle Henry has a few other people that are just as computer savvy as he is. And we need to be able to accommodate those citizens as well. So I'm not necessarily looking to resolve that right now. But I think we need to find a way to accommodate those people as well.
Yeah, we wanna make the path easier. And making the path easier actually is selfish. It makes it easier for us as well. So that's why we like to have phone hearings. And that way I can have a couple of screens up and I can look at a spreadsheet. I can look at the individual property. I can chat with the owner. I can write notes. And I can also look at maps, aerial maps and so forth. And it's really nice that way. So you can get a lot of information, dispel a lot of information in a short amount of time. And we can help people schedule their hearings. We can, we'll offer an opportunity for them to schedule online if they're savvy. And we'll also have someone that will take their, will call them up and schedule. Probably not someone waiting on the phone, but if they can provide a note, an email or something, we will call them and we'll get them scheduled. Everyone deserves to have a hearing.
Those hearings you're going to be doing by phone, are they gonna be, is there some, what kind of record do you keep of those hearings?
Well, they're informal hearings, so we don't have to record them.
But we fill out the sheets for each-
Oh, yeah. So there's information on the sheets. We'll write notes about this person is, this person says their-
Nature of their complaint.
-house is in fair condition, not, not good condition. Need to verify. Something like that. This person says the garage was knocked down two years ago. So we write down those types of notes from the-
In every case in a phone hearing, there will be a written record of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. And there'll be a spreadsheet as well.
So that'll be something-
And we'll put the data into the camera system or the valuation software system as well.
And then, then we go off onto the next two steps? Okay. I think I'm done for now, but go ahead, Bob.
I had one more thing. When you sent me my new evaluation on my house, do you send along with it? Do you, my house was compared to this house, this house and this house. Do you do that at all?
Not.
You don't do that anymore?
No, we don't. It's, so the comparison is different than what people think. We value properties by a cost approach, but it's calibrated to the market's sales. So it's not a bank appraisal where you have three comparable properties and adjustments for differences. And here's your value from that process. It's more of a mass appraisal process. So we are studying the market. We calibrate land values and building values. And, you know, the goal is to get these calibrations so they fit the market. Then those tables are applied to all the unsold properties and calculated, giving those folks new values. So it's what they call a cost approach calibrated to the local market. And that's what we're, we are basically doing and finishing up that work.
Okay. The only thing that I was a little perturbed about was when I first got the paperwork from you guys, it said I had a fireplace in my house.
Knocked that out.
There's never been a fireplace ever since it's been built. So I wasn't sure where you guys came up with that. So that was a little, a little perturbing. Yeah.
That data, I wish we had checked on that. There's a lot of people that have new fireplaces that didn't exist.
Okay.
However, that did get us a good response from everyone, because they were adamant about returning the-
Yes, it got my eye rate up, is it?
We had a high rate of this one.
I gave the explanation for that about two hundred times on-
Okay, all right.
Yeah, Jacob, you're amazing.
I think Mary Jo, you had a question.
I want Mary Jo to go next.
Okay, I thought she already spoke to it.
Well, Mary Jo, do you have anything else to add at this point?
No, I'm good. I'm just really here to hear what's going on. I just wanted to make that one clarification.
All right, thank you. Roy, you're out and you're next.
I just wanna say I'm pretty disappointed with what I've heard here tonight. My name's Roy Newman. This should not be based on the market value. What's happened in Vermont in the last five years is unbelievable. I am in and out of real estate offices all the time. And it's all coming from Boston, New York City, New Jersey. People buying homes up here. Some of them, they're even buying to put in their portfolios for the stock market. This is not fair to the local people who have lived in their homes all these years. And now you're coming in with a high market value price. We ought to be starting to talk to our state representatives and senators tomorrow. We ought to let them know that the tax department is way out of line. And that they ought to take into consideration that we are Vermonters and we don't have all kinds of cash like these people coming in from out of state. It is just not fair.
Roy, anybody else?
Mary's got her hand up again.
I can't see her hand, so.
Do you take into account anything around the house? Positive, like a beautiful view, lakefront, obviously probably a big trash heap. But is it just the house? You know what I mean?
Yeah, I caught you.
You do? Explain it a little more.
Definitely, the easiest example is lakefront.
Yeah, of course.
The city's location is great. And there's folks with nice views towards the west that look over the lake. And the market pays more for it. If the market didn't pay more for it, we wouldn't make that adjustment. I was gonna respond to Roy's question as well.
Go ahead. Probably oughta wrap it up soon, but go ahead and respond to that.
So there, the state of Vermont, not here to defend the state of Vermont at all, but there's what they call a homestead value, where you plan your homestead. And if you're income eligible, you typically have an adjustment on your tax bill. I think that sounds to me like they're trying to address that issue. If it's not your primary domicile, then you're a non-homestead and that's a different tax rate. I don't know if the tax rates are different. Whereas the homeowner tax rate is less than the non-homeowner's homeowner. But originally probably was, as it, that's how they intended back when they did that. I mean, did this change twenty-five years ago now? Twenty years ago? A long time ago.
I have one more question.
Go ahead, Mary Lee.
On this book, it has higher value two thousand fourteen, proposed value two thousand fifteen. Isn't this two thousand twenty-five?
That book, that document was generated in two thousand fifteen. This is, that hasn't changed in ten years. Sorry, Rob. This is the last one. This was when we did the reappraisal in two thousand fifteen.
Those booklets were very common for every reappraisal around the state of Vermont. They're less common now, but it's not hard to recreate that by pulling data out of the system, putting it on a spreadsheet and making copies of that. So we could-
Yeah, we're gonna have to find some way to accommodate the people that are not as computer fluent as others. Plus, I think that that particular booklet would be kinda handy to have.
Absolutely.
For, you know, just for a quick reference to see if people even wanna ask questions. So even if there's only a certain number of copies or they're available on demand, rather than publishing three thousand and fifteen hundred of them get thrown away. I don't see the point in that either. But they should be-
I agree with you.
Should be able to get one if you want one. Yeah.
If you extract and then town's print mark, they-
Yeah, you can always, you know, if we've got a, if we've got a document, you know, either a database or a Word document or an Excel spreadsheet, then the town staff can print out ten more if they need to.
Right. You can post it online for those folks that wait to see it and do have access online.
Yeah.
The information's there.
Here's Mike and Uncle Henry again.
Well-
Well, Uncle Henry has a niece, I'm sure, that's pretty good to see her.
Yeah, but she lives in California.
True.
So I'm gonna make this up as I go, too. No, I just think we need to be able to accommodate all the people. You know, not just, you know, 'cause some, some people are, you know, I might be more computer astute than Mark, but I don't think I'm in Mark's league. And I might be just a little bit more savvy than you, but I don't know that. But I just wanna be able to make sure that Uncle Henry gets taken care of as well as the twenty-five-year-old that just moved up from Wall Street and bought a place on the lake.
Not only that, but I can go on the internet and whatnot. But I want a piece of paper in my hand. I find it very hard to read on the computer. I want this, so I can tear it apart and make that work. Thank you, John.
All right, so any more questions for John before we move on? Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Still got a ways to go.
You know, I'm sure Mary at the library would, she's very accommodating. You know, they have a couple of public use computers.
Yeah.
And she would help people that were interested in going to the library and using a computer with assistance.
I'm absolutely confident if Uncle Henry went down there, somebody would help him.
Yeah, they're really, really good.
Assuming he can drive. Okay, we're gonna move on. Department of Liquor Control approvals. Rob, would you do the honors?
Oh, excuse me, before you start, Mr. Chairman. Under the Castleton Pizza Place and Deli, they do not have anything in here for tobacco license. That was just a mistake. So when you're approving it, it's not for tobacco. Everything else is good, but not tobacco. And I just went through them all to verify them, too.
I won't have to vote against it, then.
Also, Dick?
I am.
I would make a motion to approve a first-class restaurant slash bar license and outside consumption permit for the Birdseye Diner.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I would make a motion to approve a first-class restaurant bar license, third-class restaurant bar license and an outside consumption permit for the Castleton Pizza Place and Deli slash Blue Cat.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I would make a motion to approve a second-class liquor, or a second-class license and a tobacco license for the Castleton Village Store.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain. I can't vote for a tobacco license.
So let's move on to the reappointment of the Otter Creek Communication representative.
I would assume she wants to do it again?
She's the one that we appointed last year. I assume she wants to-
She sent this to us, so she definitely, she does want to be reappointed.
Now, the alternate was who last year? I don't recall now the gentleman's name.
He was the one that did it.
Prior to, does he still wanna be the alternate?
Tim Monk, yeah.
Yeah, Tim, is Tim still willing to be an alternate?
I don't know.
Well, we can approve this and then reach out to Tim and see if he's willing to add his name as the alternate list.
I would make a motion to reappoint Leslie Cadwell as our union district representative of Otter Creek Communications.
For how long?
For one year, I think, there.
Does it actually say on here?
One-year terms. It's in the-
Annually on the last Monday in April or sooner. It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Mike, you're gonna reach out to Tim?
I will.
We could just put his name on there, volunteer him.
We could, but-
He didn't say he didn't wanna do it, so.
He'll get a letter and he'll say, "Thank you for volunteering."
I like your thinking.
You have been voluntold.
Was today the twenty-fourth?
Right.
It is.
Almost a month of February gone.
Yeah, that's good. Annual road posting. Do we have Jeff online or do you wanna give the pitch here, Mike?
I'll give the pitch. No, he's not online. So this is an annual process. It says before or on or about March first, I believe is how it's worded. It's, I picked the twenty-eighth for no apparent reason besides talking with Jeff. He put some signs out originally that said the twenty-eighth. And I, and I had him take them down because the board hadn't approved them yet. So this will make it official, but with the warm weather that we've got over the next week, the roads are gonna start thawing and we're gonna, loggers are typically the ones that are using those dirt roads to get in and out like Belgo. So twenty-eighth will be the date that they officially get posted. And it goes into, until May fifteenth. Or unless lifted sooner. But if you make a motion on this to approve, to post the roads as per this public notice, there's a list of the roads in there in the packet. But if you would allow or authorize me to sign this, we'll get it, we'll get them out there and get them posted.
Is this just dirt roads?
Correct. We don't post that. We don't, we haven't posted asphalt. 'Cause I got a call from a local business owner who's in between state highways and said, "I can't get out if you do this." And like, we don't post those roads, so.
Does it mean Poltony T slash L? Part of it's in Poltony and part of it's in Castleton?
It is, if you're talking about Pond Hill.
Oh, I just see some of them have T slash L after them.
Yes, town line. So it's, we do, we do have a portion of Pond Hill that we have to travel through. It's Poltonys. And then, but these right here have Hubbardon. It says Hubbardon, Pencil Mills North Road and Pencil Mills to the Hubbardon Town Line.
These are the same ones we do every year.
'Cause it's, that's Pencil Mills dirt. East Hubbardon Road's not, is asphalt.
These are the same ones we do every year.
Yeah. Yeah, there's been no change.
Hopefully Poltony doesn't post their part of it or we won't be able to drive our trucks over it.
Yes. If they get out there and post it.
Where's the covenant on here, Mike, like for?
It's in the statutes, Bob. If there's like fuel, we can't stop fuel trucks and deliveries and stuff like that.
But that's not in here. It's not, is it, is it on here?
Oh, yeah, it's in one of them here.
Okay. Do you require those companies to pay you a certain fee? To travel these roads? I know some towns charge like fifteen bucks for per vehicle.
It's five dollars. So anybody that has an overweight permit and the overweight permits, they have to pay if they're, if they use our roads. And we get, it's like, it was been five dollars a year. And we got, they go in now, HeyGov, that we've been trying to get them to- to go in Hagov, but it's not applicable like Amazon or, you know, something like that, something that's not overweight. This is for overweight purposes.
Okay.
But there is something in here, you talked, you were talking about in the statute, we can't stop like the fuel trucks and, you know, delivery trucks from getting to where they gotta go. And like, I'm trying to think of a business in town that's, that would be on a dirt road that has to travel the dirt road to get to a paved road, we can't tell them, they can't drive their dump truck on that road.
Back when Rice Willis was dirt, for instance.
Exactly, that's the exact road I'm talking about, too.
Yeah, I knew what you were talking about, because there's two Corys there that had.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what's your pleasure, Board? Do we wanna move forward with this?
I would make a motion that we authorize the town manager to sign the annual posting of seasonal weight limits.
I'll second it.
Been moved in seconded, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Managers' report, Mike?
I did not do one this week, so unless you have any questions about something that's going on with all the meetings that we've had, hopefully, I know there's not been a lot of changes, there haven't been a lot of changes, but is there anything that anybody wants to know about that's normally on the report or not on the report?
I will state, just so every, if anyone is on Zoom or anyone watches this, that the town managers' report is also available online. So if someone wishes to review it, it's online for the meeting two weeks ago?
Yeah, in the agendas and the.
And it's, yeah. So it is available to the public if they choose to review it. Any questions for the town manager before we move on?
I got one.
Go ahead.
Update on the town highway vehicles? Are we kind of back up to snuff, or are we still kinda?
No.
Kicking the can down the road, or?
As of Friday, I don't have an update today, as of Friday, the truck, the one, the thirteen tandem, two thousand, was going out for a test drive, and I haven't heard that, it failed the test drive. So that is, as of Friday, was back in operation, the bed chain was put in and all that.
That was done, Evan did that, or did we have to outsource that?
Evan did it.
So both tandems are operational now?
Correct. And the Dodge is back operational, that wing, we had to replace a part on the wing, and, but Viking had it in, in stock. And there was another issue that's been resolved on a single axle, I think it was the wing, something wrong with the wing, but it's all been fixed.
Just a quick update on the new Chevy truck, when can that go to get outfitted?
As of today, I gave Jeff the go-ahead, I verified the amount that was in the, so the amount that TNT's charging us is the same exact amount that Viking was charging us, so I told him to go ahead and get it scheduled. So he's still, but we're still not looking at it probably until like this August, September timeframe.
So you're having TNT do it instead of?
Yeah, I talked to the president of Viking Survey's USA, and that ship had sailed, and he's like, "Let's not, let's not go pick that scab, but we'll support you going forward."
So that truck will be on the road next winter?
Correct.
Is TNT giving us a guarantee of that?
Yeah, for, they said, "August, September" is what they're, what they told Jeff is that they anticipate it'd be fully operational for us to have in our possession. August, September.
They're down in Latham, is that where they are?
Like, yeah, near Green, South, somewhere near Greenwich.
Okay, all right.
I read the, the bill or the invoice today, but I couldn't tell you where it was from. Seventy-seven thousand five hundred is what the cost is.
Okay.
It costs more for the plow packets than that truck. The truck was sixty-eight thousand dollars, the plow package was seventy-seven five.
That's crazy.
Will they sign a hard completion date?
I don't, they normally don't because of parts issues, if something happens, like something doesn't come in, like Viking won't either, because manufacturer delay, supply chain issues and stuff like that, but they're projecting August, September, so.
How reliable are they?
We never dealt with them before, this is like, this is our first testing in the waters with that company.
Okay.
We didn't have a whole lot of options.
They won't be worse than the last one.
Yeah. So, but the numbers matched up, told them today, "Go ahead and schedule it."
Okay.
Anything else, Bob?
No.
Anything from, else from the Board for Mike?
Oh, the skid steer's back in operation, too, that was down.
Oh, yeah.
The trackless is running again?
It is.
How about the wood chipper? The wood chipper, is that, is that in the works of?
I told them to go ahead, authorize them to move forward with it, so they, they had to make their phone calls to the person that's, you know where it is.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, so let's move on to purchase orders.
Oh, there's a, oh, yeah, you got one in there that was an ad, hopefully you have it, it was from Darby Mayville, is that in your packet?
It is. And what is this? Oh, it's, okay.
Darby did the minutes from the informational meeting, 'cause Nedger was not available.
Okay.
And Google wasn't available, so we hired, or I hired Darby Mayville to do the minutes. And based on what was said tonight, if there was, I don't think anybody found the issues with it, then we can move it from draft to final, and the final will get posted. The draft's out there, it was out there Friday, but the final will get posted tomorrow. And now, if you saw it or not, to the Zoom recording and the Peg TV recording, Hannah put that out on.
Changed the.
The website and stuff, saying it was out there and the links to it all.
Yeah, here they go. They changed the way they give me the stuff, so I have to figure it out.
All right, we all set?
I think so.
I would make a motion to approve purchase number zero five three zero six zero to Darby Mayville from Mayville Enterprises LLC for the meeting minutes for the informational meeting for the town meeting on two seventeen twenty twenty-five for the sum of one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
I'll second.
Just a question, why are we seeing that, Mike? That's well under your limit.
I don't know, she usually slides the things in there, so I'm like, I'm just putting it in there so I don't have to go back to Darby and say, "Oops, I missed something," and.
You're definitely, that's within your level of authority. All in favor?
Aye.
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 What is your authority?
Two K, isn't it?
Two thousand dollars, which try to buy anything for two thousand dollars today.
Can't buy anything significant.
Well, we could buy some minutes for meetings.
You can buy copy paper.
Yeah, it's on sale at Staples this week.
I would make a, did we vote on that?
We did.
We did.
I would make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five three six eight six to LHS Associates for ballots for electric coating of the tabulator for the sum of twenty, two thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Would make a motion to approve purchase order number zero five three four seven four to Chumong Supply Corporation for the Saber Blades and Hardware for the Dodge Fifty-five Hundred for the sum of three thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty cents.
Second.
Been moved in seconded, discussion? Mike?
I, there was a question that was at the last meeting about how many of the old steel blades we have for the stuff, so we're out of blades for the front plows, we have wing, wing blade plows, but there's no more front blades, we're now into the carbide only. But we do have some older steel blades for the wings at this point, but nothing for the front blades.
Shouldn't we have?
Well, we got spares on the, on the, on those saber or the carbide blades, but they're supposed to last a long time, so.
Hopefully, they're gonna last eight years.
Yeah, so.
And we'll have a set of spares that come with the new truck.
Correct. That's what, on the new tandem, there's a, that comes with those copper carbide blades.
But they can't delete the steel blades, so we'll get those in the back of it, maybe we can use them on something else.
Or they're gonna have battle spares if we need them.
I also didn't check, I didn't ask them about the old, the plows that are sitting out there that are not being used, the old plows, maybe there's blades on those, I don't know.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll ask.
Purchase orders.
Would, yeah, we just did purchase orders.
Warrants?
Did they, was he voting the last one? It was a discussion of.
Did we vote?
Yeah, we didn't vote on this thing.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
For warrants, Dick?
I hope so.
I would make a motion to approve warrant number zero two two four R for the sum of twenty-six thousand thirty-seven dollars. Warrant number zero two two zero for the sum of fifteen thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Warrant number zero two two four for the sum of forty-three thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and nine cents. Warrant number zero two one three P for the sum of twenty thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars and twelve cents. And warrant number zero two two zero P for the sum of twenty-one thousand seven hundred and four dollars and seventy-three cents.
I'll second.
Moved in seconded to approve the warrants, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Be so kind, Mr. Town Manager.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Now for, one for everybody?
Yeah, it's just an FYI.
Okay.
For your input at some point.
Okay.
Next meeting.
All right.
Next, the discussion for next meeting.
Oh, okay.
At next meeting, are we going to discuss these prices?
I think we should.
I know she's asking you.
Put it on the agenda for next meeting?
It'll be one of my action items, add to next meeting agenda.
Where's my? I lost my agenda. There it is. I don't think there needs to be an action item.
For me, and just so I know that to add it. Ooh, grumble, grumble. While you're doing that, I was, I missed something, on the rec commission, appointment for Josh Ferguson, was that discussed? I was messing around with Zoom.
We tabled it till next meeting.
Okay. Josh, hopefully we'll be able to be here.
Okay.
And hopefully by then, Mark and I will have rewritten that one paragraph in the rec department charter.
Okay, thank you.
Five of them, Dick?
Five words.
Just go out with paperclip and everything. All right, so warrants are complete, so we're gonna move on to select board comments. Mary Lee?
I have one, but I'll have to be executive session.
Okay. Bob, or Rob, what's your name, Rob? Bob, what's your name? Do you have anything?
No.
Mark?
Sometimes I feel like select board comments, concerns, and action items blend together. So I don't wanna forget our private road discussion, I know we've been really busy, but we need to get back to that. Last week, we had some discussions around the fire department, I don't know if that's a follow-up for now or executive session.
Let's do that in the executive session.
Okay.
That order's on or is well into the realm of personnel.
EMS fees for the university, Mike already discussed that, so I'm good.
We're all set, then, I'm, I'm fine for now, just.
Just an update on that, on the private road thing, so I've got the records from all that we could find from the highway department and from ours and searching the minutes, and we found nothing that, that's in, that we can search electronically to, that bring any light to this whole process. So now the next step is digging through boxes of paper minutes, and that's just gonna take some time.
This is specific to Cedar Mountain Road?
Correct. Or anything that, so we did some keywords, private roads, you know, we're trying to find anything we can electronically, and, but, but we looked at, for Cedar Mountain specifically, up at the garage and at the town office, and there's nothing that covers anything that would talk about where we should stop plowing or why we should stop plowing or any research that was done about where we should stop plowing, so it's gonna be digging through boxes for, for that stuff. And probably the same with Higgins Road and Gump Road. But I did talk to our attorney, and if you want her opinion, she said, "Stop maintaining private roads." It opens you up for all kinds of stuff, and I'm like, "Well, we've been doing it, it's not like we just thought about it," but she's like.
Well, I think with Gump Road, we had to do something different, 'cause we got a manhole down there that we have to maintain.
Should get an easement, at least through that property.
So, who, I don't wanna do a deep dive on this right now, but who owns Gump Road?
It was, at the time, Andy Grauziano.
So who owns it now?
I gotta, gotta figure that out.
Well, let's find that out, and then we need to decide what our course of action should be and approach that owner and see if we can make some sort of an arrangement that makes sense for both them and us.
And then what's the short one?
We need to access the manhole, and they need to access four A, and I'm sure there's some middle ground somewhere.
Right, that should be an easy one.
And then Higgins Road, we need to find out why it was, started to be maintained by the town, and if that reason is still in existence, and if not, we contact the homeowners there, landowners there on that road and make some sort of an arrangement that makes sense. I mean, I don't wanna jerk the rug out from underneath anybody, just like on Cedar Mountain, but we need to figure out where the line is and make sure it's drawn and then move on.
She felt we were within our legal rights to give notice that we weren't gonna do it anymore.
Correct, and there's a, yes, correct, and then we have to figure out how you do that, like the notice, like a year in advance, you know, there has, there's a process, and of course she'd be willing to help write the letter that meets the legalese that's needed, so.
Good, once, I'll say it again, just because rumors got out last time, we have no intention of jerking the rug out from under anybody, but we need to figure out where the line is, get it drawn, and then everyone knows going forward from a certain date in time, whatever that is, what the deal's gonna be.
There is a person that approached me who should speak to all of you who can tell you how you happened to start doing private roads, and I don't know that I should say it.
Okay, then, don't.
At this point, but there is someone that'll tell you when you did it and why you did it. Whether it's true or not, I don't know.
I'm sure there's a variety of reasons.
Well, I'm certainly willing to listen if someone has to say, I mean, it can't possibly hurt and it could poss, and it might help.
Absolutely.
So when you decide what the right thing to do is, let me know.
Why don't I have him call you?
That works for me. So I'm gonna move on to action items, I've got three now. We're going to have to continue the private road discussion, and that's gonna be a collective group effort, and you're right, Mark, we shouldn't drop the ball on that. We're gonna put the seat, the rec center room rental rate discussion on the agenda for next meeting, and the town manager's staff is gonna reach out to Tim Monks to see if he's willing to be our.
Alternate.
Alternate for the Otter Valley.
Otter Creek.
Otter Creek, whatever, I can't remember the name of the organization. OCCUD.
There you go.
Communications Union District.
Yes. Those are the only action items I have, did I miss something? Did I miss something? Okay, we're gonna move on to, we need an executive session for personnel. If someone would care to make a motion?
I make a motion that we have an executive session for personnel for the board and the town manager at 9:12.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, Mark ran away. But we're four to, four to zero, we'll do it. Um, moved and seconded, we have a, go into executive session. All in favor?
I'm seconding, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
I didn't, but I will.
Oh, I thought, I guess I...
No, it's okay.
Got ahead of myself here.
You're good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are in executive session.